Thank you very much, Mr Brown for that report. Chris Mullins, would you like to add anything?
No, I think the Chair should tell us that without bringing it in.
Thank you, it's really encouraging to hear also that you are working through the fifty points of the Friends of the Earth. And it seems that it's a really serious thing here that we have council officers as well as our members combining forces and actually getting on with it. And especially this point that you mentioned in terms of the motions, so that it's not just an exercise where we pass them, but that we are actually doing something with them. So that there is an action from that, thank you very much. And our final report comes on low carbon economy and that's from councillor Joe Dunn.
Thank you. Fabulous. Yeah, so we met last Monday, it was Chris Walsh and Koi and obviously it was Dan Hardy. I appreciate Dan Hardy's actual input into it and his knowledge on the subject. In terms of the discussion, we highlighted the key priorities that we will take moving forward. And we did establish that the green economy for the local city council would have the police control. What we did establish is that order is going to be put into place to establish the green businesses within the city. The effectiveness, how we grow, what implications are there, how can we help out. There are also creating substantial services and scientists for businesses in place to assist the businesses. There is also funding available from the combined authority. So I think that's something we'll be looking into to try and assist the businesses going forward. What we will be doing as well is we want to encourage businesses to actually look at what can be done. The sustainable power they use in independent businesses, how the tail is sourced. And we really want to kind of encourage businesses to shop locally, which is also good. We're loving our heavy industry, the power consumption was a major issue for the north of the city. What we also will be loving that is the national and international businesses producing road traffic. We encourage people to change places to shop. We're loving our infrastructure providing sustainable power solutions, which is the best way to be formed across the whole of the city. We also did talk about the solar panels for local businesses and seeing which, if it's effective for certain businesses and the cost that goes with it. Some programmes are currently in place, they're obviously dependent on the power requirements of businesses. And also the structural issues for some businesses involved. What we also want to do is raise members' awarenesses in regards to the local empowerment task group. The membership currently as it stands is big and councillor Sarah Morgan, councillor Polley Lake has expressed an interest. I encourage members to, we need one more, I encourage members to join that task group. And moving forward, we'll be looking at the best way to actually promote the green agenda for businesses in the city. In regards to our first actual meeting, the task group will meet, it'll be the January, the end of January. And what we'll be doing in that task group is there's going to be a presentation. And we're going to be looking at where green businesses are in the city. Like I said before, we'll be seeing how can we improve their methodology in terms of packaging and stuff like that. What options in terms of support that are available to the green businesses moving forward. Obviously with combined authority, a lot of funding that we might be able to tackle to for them. Do we report on the challenges facing businesses on the agenda and we can support them moving forward. The most of the costs cost effectively, right? And we will also also improve the collective members' autonomy. We have also invited the school partners along and obviously moving forward. We're encouraging businesses to actually maybe meet moving forward and discuss ideas, what they're comfortable with, issues that might be surrounding certain proposals.
Thank you very much for that detailed report. Could I just, before I bring you Laura in, just to ask there Darren Hardy or Hardy?
Hardy.
Hardy, if you would like to add anything.
Chair.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to thank all four of the Chairs for, especially at this busy time, the amount of work they've already done or at least planned to do. And I'm aware that all four of them are doing that on top of their many day jobs that they've already got. So I do genuinely thank you for taking on that role. If there's problems with membership, then maybe the Chair and I could work with you to chase people down. And with regard to the waste one, seriously, it might be helpful to run the Waste Authority. Which I'm obviously one of the elected officials, Tony or councillor Hanson as well if you want to. I know that's not helping with agenda balance, but we're all circles. So if there's any other problems with getting members along, then I'm sure Leonard and I could work together to encourage people to stand up and support that. So thank you.
I mean, my thinking is that I would like to attend these meetings if possible as an observer, so that to get some insight into what is happening. I mean, I'm just here now looking at the next two dates for our meetings and just thinking, you know, what's actually reasonable to ask of the task groups? Because our next one is on the 3rd of February and then we have 23rd of March. I had this idea that maybe we would ask two presentations per meeting, but I'm not sure if a lot can be done until the 3rd of February. So just to think, what are your thoughts, members of the committee, in terms of how do we move forwards? Do we ask, because obviously we want to have some reports within this year before we move again into a new year. So do we take all four reports on the 23rd of March as to what happened? Or do we want to have two in February, two in March? Any ideas please, councillor Dunn?
As I've already said about the task group, there's obviously always a problem in place to establish the green businesses within the city. I believe that was coming out, how long that may take.
Chair, I think we might have that finished by February, because obviously it's quite a big piece of work to get some detail. But we're sort of waiting for the back in terms of March.
Any other comments, councillor Brown?
Well, I'd already spoken in the press when we met. I think our first meeting had quite like an opportunity to understand what the councils are already doing in relation to waste reduction. Preserving desire, you know, the councils doing, and suspect not every elected member will as well. But I think actually from that first meeting, you know, that's the sign of where we're going to take ideas forward. And I think we'll do ideas from that, but I think, you know, Chris is happy to do so, maybe repeating that presentation to all his committee. In February might be useful.
Yes, yes. Okay, then thank you very much. So we have one for February then, one for March, and we have tomorrow councillor Brown and councillor Clark.
So Sam, I don't know about the policies we're using for our task group. We've already made a good start in terms of the baseline, so we could bring some sort of fundamental baseline work to you to understand where we are as a city, as we stand now. And then maybe another report following that in terms of how we can improve best practice after we've done that challenge with other core cities and that benchmarking work that was so endeavour.
Okay, I don't think we'll have time for two, but maybe two go in February as well, does that work for you councillor Dunn?
Yeah, I think for the similar, it'll probably be setting the benchmarks and so forth here with them and see how we can incorporate best practice. So move ahead on whatever that and work with the officer group and so forth through the group. As to how we can, as I say, best progress. We did also talk about the possibility of co-opting some specialist members from outside of the council. So that might be done in February as well perhaps. So I can see limited success or limited progress by February, but certainly it's worth a report back, I think, at that stage.
Thank you, I think because we have quite a lot already on air quality and we are going to get some information on Mersey travel as well as probably best, that your report then goes in March and the other one on built and natural environment goes in February. So that's great that we have that schedule in place in terms of reports for the next two meetings. Thank you very much. So can we move on? Is this enough for the updates on the four task groups? Thank you very much. I'd like to really express my thanks to all four Chairs and for the supporting council officers for all your work there. And we are going to move now on to item number five, which is a presentation of the Merseyside travel overview. And can I please invite councillor Liam Robinson, Chair of the Merseyside Travel Transport Committee, to introduce a presentation providing an overview of the activities of the Merseyside travel. Thank you.
Really, thanks. Going to start by thanking you for inviting me along this meeting to present to you. Genuinely, well, consultant, individually, both Mersey travel and command authorities collectively, are more than happy to do anything that we can to assist the work of this committee, in particular Lawrence's task and finish. Because of all the crises this country and this world are facing, this is butfire, what is not, because this is existential. I've put together a presentation that hopefully will take about ten minutes or so. And then the bit that I think will be most helpful, giving us some questions and thoughts, ideas and discussion. And we'll get into much greater detail potentially as well. So let me start with a little bit of a recapitulation. Because climate change and air quality issues are everything new for the city region. If we look back in time, as we've seen from the slides, the buildings used to be covered in soot from a time when everyone had opened fire and from a time when most of the industry had smokestacks involved. Because things seem a lot cleaner, because the pollution isn't as visible, it's no less problematic actually. And I really like the image that we've put on this slide here that Sadiq Khan was using in London, where it actually shows and highlights the kind of pollution that you find on a baby bottle. I think that's really powerful, because if more people could see things like that and realise the effect that it has on some of our most vulnerable residents, in this case, young children. Actually, that would really give a great focus on the fact that we have to do something about this. Transport has a huge role to play in this sort of carbon challenge. If you look at those graphs, effectively, the sort of impact of carbon emissions from transport is growing in the city region. That's for two very practical reasons as a proportion. One is the fact that industry actually is cleaning up its act to improve and emitting less carbon. But also because of traffic growing over the past few decades, it's absolutely adding to the problem. So we know we have to do something about it from a transport perspective. Equally as well, I'm very conscious of the fact that we talk about climate change and climate emergency, we're talking about the air quality issues. They are not the same thing, but they are definably two sides of the same coin. And actually, a lot of the solutions that we need to put in place are extremely similar. And when we think about the impact of transport on air quality, again, in terms of nitrogen dioxide and particulate matter emissions, again, transport's impact is growing partly because of the way that industry is cleaning up its act, but also as well because of the increase in diesel traffic across the region. Things like buses, taxis, vans, trucks and so on. So we really need to go and address these things through both a climate change perspective but also an air quality perspective. Because they are, as I said before, definably two sides of the same coin. I thought it'd be useful just to put this slide up, because one of the things that the naysayers often say about this whole agenda is that it's not a priority or it's unpopular, people might not think about it, but they don't really want to kind of bite the bullet and deal with it. I thought this would be quite useful to put some strong evidence that we're getting about how people do see this as a priority. The combined authorities are currently engaged in what we call LCR listens, which genuinely is a sort of outreach check to signs going out across the region, speaking to the residents of the region. Particularly when we're talking to people about what their priorities are, they are indicating that pollution and climate change and those issues generally are a priority towards for them. They're also telling us that actually they see there's an important need to move away from petrol and diesel vehicle traffic as a key part of the pollution causes in the region. And that there's another way of doing that, they want to see improved public transport and improved active travel, particularly things like cycling. It's really heartening, I found, that actually we're not getting a lot of comments from people saying we need to kind of make it easier to drive your car around. So I think it's really important that we're highlighting this, because if we're going to have to take bold decisions, and we will, this gives us the evidence that our residents want us to have the courage of our convictions. So why aren't we actually doing it, or what are we going to do further and do more of? Well, quite frankly, we need to reduce car usage and private vehicle usage. That's the only way from a transport perspective we are going to address climate change and air quality. Key to that has to be active travel and we're working very closely with all six district councils on a very radical vision of promoting active travel, particularly cycling. We've got a very bold programme of potentially up to three hundred kilometres of high quality segregated cycling infrastructure to be delivered across the city region in the next four years. This can't be a nice map that sits on the wall, this has to be something that is designed and then delivered. The first tranches of that, we've already committed nine million pounds of funding towards. Particularly in the city, that will see a significant upgrade and new infrastructure from speak up to the city centre. But a number of other corridors, we're focusing on beyond that. We also know that actually it can't just be about moving the infrastructure, that is key. We also need to give people the skills to confidently ride bikes. I'm very proud of the fact that we still deliver the largest programme of bikeability, so cycle proficiency in all the money of any part of the country. And in the past couple of years, eight thousand kids across our region have gone through this programme. Particularly focusing on those coming from primary school to senior school ages. And we want to maintain that, because we know how important that is. You all know how important City Bike has been, in fact, that compared to other cities, absolutely beaten a lot of its usage forecasts and is still in place and a key part of the transport mix. And a comment we made earlier about the great work that Simon O'Brien is doing as the Cycling and Walking Commissioner in Liverpool and the city of Liverpool, so much so we've extended his remit to cover the whole of the city region. I met with him earlier on today, I have to say, the map that he showed me is very, very exciting. He's great, we've got such a fantastic local advocate who's putting together some very, very visionary plans that we have to deliver on. Obviously, active travel is key, but public transport is a really important way of getting people around. Buses have to be at the heart of that. I'll say a few things about trains shortly. We're still eighty percent of our public transport network and usage is on the bus. I think we've got a bad story to tell. Over recent years, patronage on buses locally has grown, it's up by sixteen percent in one few parts of the country where more people are getting on the bus. That's for a variety of different reasons, focusing on things like the quality of vehicles and trying to improve the services. Particularly one of the things that's been extremely successful is fantastic Mayor's idea, because she should be one of the ones that takes some of the key credit on this, is getting a much better deal for young people. The fact we've been able to reduce the cost of travel for young people, the fact is up there, we've increased the number of young persons journeys across our region by one hundred and sixty-eight percent. We should be damn proud of that, we've doubled the number of kids on buses. We didn't want to go much further than that. And we're currently going through the very detailed process that legally we have to go through to utilise the devolved powers that were given to us, well, given the wrong word, returned to us, because there were powers taken away from us in the nineteen eighties, actually to regulate buses and put the passenger at the heart of what we want to do with the bus network. I could spend hours boring you about that, that might be another presentation further down the line. But in February, we will be bringing forward our recommendations about how we will be using those powers. One of the key components of that is a zero emissions bus fleet by the twenty thirty's. We know that absolutely, this isn't about getting more people on the bus and out of private cars, let's make sure that they're going around, the bus is not causing any problems to the environment through what comes out of the exhaust. Starting point of that will be twenty-five hydrogen buses that we procured that we'll be going to service in twenty twenty. We're very lucky in this region that actually in Romcombe, we've got some industry that produces hydrogen as a waste product. Why are we allowing that to opportunity into the sky when we should be powering our public transport network with that? So we're really excited about how we can utilise that accordingly. Moving on to the rail network, we did have some positive things to say on the rail network. In the next couple of weeks, hopefully the first brand new publicly owned rolling stock for Mersey Rail will be with us. The train spot is amongst us, the first number is seven 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 zero zero one, should be with us very soon. We know that those brand new trains will really kind of improve the attractiveness of the Mersey Rail network. Again, I could bore you to tears for hours about that, the key part I would highlight is the fact we'll have level access and sliding step at each door will be truly saving the people. And anyone with an accessibility issue has equals in a way that has never happened on a heavy rail network anywhere else in this country. Because these vehicles are also lighter, they will use a lot less electric energy and we will be training battery technologies. So the potential for some of those services to extend to places where the railways are not electric, like Wrexham, Warrington, the potential we're going to have with scale this day really gives huge opportunities. We know that will get more people onto the rail network. Over the past year, we've seen some new services, for the first time in forty years, brand new services from Wales, because of the work we did re-setting the Holland curve and the great work we're doing with the Welsh Government, we'll be getting even more direct services into Wales. This last weekend, the first direct trains to Glasgow and Edinburgh for twenty odd years started. We've also been able to secure a principal commitment of two trains out down to London, something we've been arguing for for a long period of time. So some brand new services. Whilst there's positive news, I wish I could say the same about Northern Rail, I can't. I could write a book about why that is popular, but and one of the things we're arguing very strongly is the recovery starts when Northern gets shown the door. Equally as well, longer term, we're focusing very, very hard on what we call Crossrail for the North, the government called Northern Powerhouse Rail, a brand new high speed link for the city region linking us on to HST. That would give us lots of benefits, but crucially would give us brand new rail capacity so we could absolutely put more services for local capacity on a conventional network, but also utilise that for doing with goods and freight. Because one of the things we're doing a lot of investigation in is how can we improve the movement of goods and freight across our city and across our region? Because it's absolutely vital. There are lots of different things we are looking at, we're working out with Highways England on an electric van pilot, where effectively they're going to provide us with a fleet of electric vans that we can loan to local businesses so they can understand how actually moving to electric can be better for their business is a really good way to get them to buy them in the fullest of time. We also think there's huge opportunities for urban consolidation. If we were to go out around the city centre, particularly in open, the backs of vans, you'd find that most of them are nowhere near full. How can we reduce that traffic by actually kind of consolidating more of that freight and goods movement accordingly? Lots of things as well around scrappers that we're looking at, how we can work with all of our district colleagues on things like scrapper schemes with taxi fleet, for example, and other polluting fleets. We also know there's huge opportunities to extend smart ticketing. Believe it or not, the Walrus card that somebody might have used to use to travel around the transport network locally. After the Osticard in London actually is the highest used transport card in its province, but we know that we've got so much further to go. We are rebranding that as Metro cards, we will also be branding, well, refreshing the transport brand across the network. We'll be keeping the yellow, we'll be moving trains, buses and also potentially ferries to that Metro brand to make it much more integrated, because actually people want an A to B integrated journey. They don't want to be kind of looking at who runs that bus, who runs that train, for example. And then so finally, there's a lot that we've got to do on the potential for speed management in livable streets. We've got a great record here in the city of Liverpool with twenty mile an hour zones. I have to say, there is really enthusiasm to spread that across all residential roads across the city region, which I think would be a huge behavioural change for our whole region. And frankly, so the traffic down would lead to less emissions and it's something we want to push on with Highways England. About where the motorway network intersects the region is there the potential to reduce the speed on some of that network from seventy miles an hour down to sixty miles an hour to help improve emissions and air quality accordingly. I'll finish with a few pitches, because I think it's quite nice, because some of those things are nice ideas. We've got a good track record up there, we've got Wayward Jahan Street for the Car Free Day. Angela and Laura and others did a great job, that needs to be much more commonplace. And I can think of a number of streets, including one in the own war, where we wanted to do exactly that. Again, we've got great heritage, that's the nineteen sixties on Sherwood Street, that's it today. If we've got the courage of our convictions, we can make more of our public spaces like that. Final thoughts I'll leave you with, I think this is a great quote from the mayor of Potters, if you can get it in the back, if you can't, I'll read it out. That "A developed country is not a place where the poor have cars, it's where the rich use public transport." And my god, that has to be true. Final bits that I think we need to sort of say, we really need to kind of win some heart and loyalty here. Probably the most extreme example over recent decades is people's attitudes towards smoking. I appreciate this is different in some ways, but actually it's just as important, there's an emergency for our lives and the livability of our planet going forward. There are a few things we all need to do, everyone has a part to play in this. But I would say we, I mean, city council, both councils and offices, have to lean on this. Because quite frankly, I have very little faith that the government re-elected last week will actually play a leading role on this. If we're prepared to have the courage of our convictions and actually practise what we preach, and that means all of us being prepared to get out of cars, get on buses, ride our bikes, not only can we look like them, but actually we'll take much better decisions. If we actually take decisions from the view from the top deck of a bus or from holding handle by bus, you actually end up with better decisions than if we don't do that. And the final, final bit I will say is when we're looking at the highway network, if we're going to answer this question, and we have to, then actually we need to be thinking about whenever we're doing a highway network, how do we prioritise sustainable transport? Put it as crudely as this, how do we get more bums on seats on buses and more bums on saddles and bikes? Simple as that. Hope that's useful, but more likely to get into a wider debate discussion.
Thank you very much Liam for this inspirational report actually. And I love that idea that you had there that it's about movement of people and not vehicles. Of course, we all have to kind of think differently and think slow and kind of develop a slow sensibility as we are moving to two places, such as slow travel, which, you know, provides a different way of thinking about the world as well. So I'd like to know questions from members to Liam, councillor Liam Robinson's presentation or comments, okay? So we've got two here, we have councillor Brown and councillor, all three, we have councillor, two councillors, Laura and Chris, and then we have councillor Joe Dunn as well, yes?
Oh yeah.
Okay?
Thanks and thanks certainly for that turn, I will, just to refer back to the question that you raised before specifically about the seventy-five, eighty and eighty-sixty bus groups currently in the mix as far as possible, changes are concerned. I'd like some clarification on that if possible. Also, you mentioned that up to three hundred kilometres causes of cycle waste. Hopefully, that means nearer three hundred than the hope to suggest. But hopefully that's good quality cycle waste as well, because, high quality cycle waste, because I think it's clear from most people when you speak to them that the reason they don't cycle more is because, all at all, is because of safety on the roads. And that's a straightforward, simple principle. If you do as much bikeability training as you like, but if you don't get that safe people on your levels, then you're not likely to get people kind of cycling into the future.
May I just, if you hear three questions and then let you answer, just for the sake of our time?
Thank you. In regards to rail, it is obviously in chief, it is the British line, that's been shut quite a while. I think it's been reported by Anfield and the Bureau are putting proposals in to actually expand the ground to ten thousand more. expanding it around 10,000 more than, I think it's 60,000 or 70,000. As obviously is the limit on where Anfield can expand to, because obviously as continues to expand, there's going to be more congestion, not just in Chingrue, but in Anfield and standard areas, and there's obviously there's a real demand for railway stations across there. I know there's obviously there's structural problems within, it's a very complex issue. I do believe there is really combined authorities, long-term plans, what I've read, but they provided updates, it could have got shorter as demands are obviously increasing.
Appreciate we've got a lot of questions, but I just want to ask you a couple. You mentioned about Mersey Rail, avid user, glad to see that you stop, obviously we'll have a new usability access, and it's great that people can get on off the stations, but to actually get into the station sometimes is the hardest part. Have you got an update in relation to rail station improvements, particularly, you know, you take places by date for presence and stuff like that, you know, you can't get down the stairs, so provide an update in relation to that. Echoing Joe's point in terms of, in terms of transport and resources and, you know, they're very city, in large parts, you know, it's really quite hard to get any type of transport, I think in particular in my world, it's round by Gatwick, parts of Chilwell, you know, you're relying on things like the H T M buses, which come every few days, and there's a great opportunity, I think, with things like a Reebok Click, for example, I think they're doing, which are quite innovative in the city, we're looking at plans to kind of work with them to expand their services. I know that in Gaster, they have now taken over Gaster Circular, there's an opportunity to meet with them and look at them providing additional services in parts of the city where people can't necessarily get into the city centre or train station.
Okay, great, I'll translate them in in number order. Lots in terms of the city centre connectivity and stuff, I haven't got the full detail of how services will operate, because that's still being worked out with the bus companies, but the vision very much is to retain all those services, particularly accessing the other streets corridor. I have to say, I think us doing the consultation that we did has been very, very helpful. You know, we're, I believe this is wrong, but consultation of bus services is not a statutory requirement, we're about the only city region in the country that actually does that. And I think by having the very detailed conversation with people that we did, with the thousands who actually goes to it, has put us in a position to make sure we get a much better outcome than if kind of pointy heads like me sort of sat in ivory towers saying this is how it should operate. So the vision very much is to retain all those services, we still have to work all that through with the bus companies, and a lot of it is dependent on the capacity that the bus network will give us, but that's very much what we're aiming to do. In terms of the bike network, the 300 kilometre is very much the combined authority aspiration over and above the district aspirations, absolutely. I think when you look at the great work that not only Simon's doing, but actually Joe's been matching with the money, it will go much further than that kind of 300 kilometre network, it'll fan out across the region, there'll be a lot more detailed stuff on more local roads, the 300 kilometre network, if you, if I was to use this phrase, you have to kind of, it's the superhighway bit, it's the longer distance type stuff, so it has to be a bit, the whole kind of behavioural shift, and the way I kind of look at it, and the reason that we're so focused on the four-year target, is Seville is a good example, where they have a 10-year target to roll out a significant cycle highway network. Now, obviously Seville's climate is different to ours, but it's actually more extreme, you know, it's got a desert climate in the summer, they were able to roll out their superhighway network in two years, so we should be able to do it in four, if we're serious about that. Joe, in terms of the Boot Brans Line, and yes, we are doing feasibility work of how we potentially could introduce a passenger service to that, it's very much a manifesto commitment of Steve Rotherham, so he's particularly keen on that, and we're doing the detailed work. That's been commissioned, one of the things that makes it slightly more complex is the Boot Brans Line is the main rail route in and out of the port of Liverpool, and with the expansion of the port, we need to utilise that as much as possible for the movement of goods and freight in and out of the port. Mixing passenger trains with freight trains isn't always easy, because freight trains tend to be slower and tend to sort of slow down the passenger trains, but that doesn't mean that it can't be done, but that's why we need to do the feasibility work on how it could be done, what infrastructure would be required, because we probably need to electrify that line, and then also what stations would be required on that line, and what service should then operate, but genuinely, the feasibility work is being done, and we know how important providing a rail service to that part of North Liverpool would be to those communities, so it is certainly something that we're focusing on. Chris, in terms of the points about station access, you're absolutely right, if we've got a fully accessible fleet of trains, we do need to move towards a fully accessible network of stations. About 62% of the city region's rail stations are step free, which is better than if we are having this conversation in Birmingham, for example, but still shows there's a lot more that we've got to do. We have got funding for additional five stations across the region, two of those are in Liverpool, we're all agreeing that St Michael's are the next ones that are going to put some lifts into, but we are looking at how could we roll out a plan to every station. Traditionally, we've depended upon government funding, and government is particularly parsimonious on these kind of issues, because in simple terms, to put a pair of lifts in a station to make it step free costs about two million quid. We think that you'd be looking at more than 100 million to get the whole city region network done. We should aim to do that, but that just gives a bit of an indication of the cost, but also that it would take time to do. And then finally, in terms of bus service coverage, I think we're seeing the devolved powers have been a huge opportunity to actually get a better coverage, particularly at times of day, one of the things within the vision of using the devolved powers is on each route having at least one service an hour between five o'clock in the morning and midnight, and 50 core routes, things like the number 10, the 82, the 79, being 24-hour, because we think that's really important a part of the vision. However, demand responsive transport can be a part of that. You're right, the Reebok Click service is quite interesting, pretty good in filling a different sort of gap, so what role could that play within utilising the devolved powers? And, you know, whether it's down delivery or whether it might be another, demand responsive operator could be an opportunity to work the taxi for, for example, so it could well also be something that we could factor in, but happy to kind of have that conversation if you think it could be a solution in your world.
Thank you very much Liam. Do we have any more questions from the members? We have from councillor Coleman, anyone else? Because we are kind of running out of time as well, we need to move on. Councillor, we've already asked your question, so I'll just call it to councillor Coleman now, thank you.
I just wanted to ask my question is about buses and affordability, how far can we go as a combined authority? Also, some of those, because I'm sure that people drive a bit more people on buses, and you might go nice and simple to come to London to ask how much transport costs in the consequence of London, so just that's it, how far can we go?
Yeah, absolutely, we're never on the record saying how extortionate the cost of bus fares are locally, because there's a flat fare policy that the bus is a heavy place. Being fair, £230 to get all the way, all the way to St Helens, that you could argue that's good value, to go up the road to the Royal Hospice, frankly is scandalous, and that needs addressing. When you look at other parts of this country, for example, in Bristol, a lot of bus fares were cut, and that generated quite a bit of patronage growth, Nottingham's a good example where the bus fares are more affordable, but more closer to home, all that stuff we've done with MyTicket and reducing the price for under 19s, it's nothing scientific, if you make sure it's good value, people use it, it's quite straightforward economics at the end of the day. And absolutely, for me, this is really important, it's kind of a social justice issue, because if it's, if people can't afford to use it, then they're missing out on so many opportunities. And even those people that can afford to use it, it's not good value, they don't, they do something different. So a lot of the work we're doing on the devolved powers is what is the right approach to ticketing and fares, and how do we get the best deal? Because I actually think there's an opportunity by which you can have fair structure, it's more affordable, that actually gets more bums on seats, but ultimately you can generate more revenue. I'd like to think that then there's the opportunity to go even further, if we've got a better result last week, we would be looking at free for under 25s, so how can we look at what would be the right way of getting a much better deal that actually make public transport, bus travel by far and away the first choice, and people will pass the car, and that happens to be south, 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 down.
Thank you very much, okay, may I please ask the members to collectively thank councillor Robinson for his presentation, is that agreed? Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on to item number six now, which is question time, and you should all have in front of you the questions that were asked from the public, and that councillor, member of the cabinet, councillor Robertson Collins has provided answers to, okay? Can you all have a look at that? I would just like to note that there is a lot of questions that are coming from the public around climate emergency, and we do have members of public attending this meeting as well, so from my perspective as a chair, I do have to note that this is a very much a public issue, and that also some of the members were also asking, for example, in terms of having public question times and issues like that, or even a scrutiny committed that is made of public. As you may know, in Birmingham, there are going to be citizens' assemblies around climate emergency, so it's very much not just an issue for the council, but obviously for the citizens. So, you know, my thinking is that there ought to be at least city conversations around climate emergency where members of public can be engaged. Obviously here, as you can see, the structure is such that we are scrutinising the work of the cabinet member and thinking of what the council is working, but we also need to have some mechanism, I believe, where the members of public are heard, and that this is a kind of a democratic, more democratic issue, where the public are involved. I mean, that, that, that would be my suggestion, that there's some at least city conversation on this issue. Is that a reasonable request? Yeah? Okay. Any other thoughts from the members here of the committee in terms of these questions and answers from public? Or do we just agree with them and so they become public then on the, on the internet, on, on the website? Yes, please?
Yeah, just to say that as far as the ones concerned with transport and air quality are concerned, we will be looking at those a bit more detail in pieces of task groups as far as that concerns, so they will take a form of part of the work for the task groups we go on.
Okay, thank you very much. And of course, also there is one here, which is about the cruise terminal as well, that we will now talk about, okay? So is this agreed, this answers to the questions, do we agree with that? Okay, thank you. Yes?
So now, could we get a chance to talk, will we get a chance to talk to the question staff?
The idea is, this is why I've said what I've said, because the idea here is...
We have seen that, we have seen that, oh, nice, she's over, but what it's about, maybe that?
Okay, they are never published in the press, may I ask Michael Jones here to maybe comment on this, on the process, what happens?